The time is now 5:30 PM. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Commission meeting. We're going to call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. All commissioners are present. If you please rise for the invocation, Commissioner Betis will lead us. Thank you.
Lord, as we convene in service to our city, grant us wisdom to make decisions that honor the well-being of all residents. May our discussions be marked by unity, understanding, and a shared commitment to progress. Let's call these things in the name of God and Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now, the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, if you read the conflict of interest, please.
Under conflict of interest, under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has qualified financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the study nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose to the side?
None.
Yes, two F and four.
None.
None.
None. Two A.
Two what?
A.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up for citizen communication, Amanda?
Yes, ma'am, we have one, Mr. Raymond Reyes, and the topic is continued progress.
Okay.
And he's here.
Wonderful.
Good afternoon, Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan-Tuck Drive. Again, a subject I want to speak about is continued progress. There's ongoing changes. Of course, as always, there's always issues for refinement and to stay on top of things. I myself have been busy. Enjoy my retirement with my grandkids when I can, but there's always something going on, unfortunately. That's just the life we all live. There's always something coming up. So one thing I just wanted to speak about briefly is, and I've run into it, or some of my family members have run into it, I should say, some other departments that I guess are, I don't know, nonprofits, I'm not talking about the humane society or anything like that, but other agencies that help the citizens of Harlingen. And I'm probably going to put an email together because I don't want to call anybody out, you know, make them feel bad and stuff, you know, not like that unless I have to be. But I think that in the agency or department that gets funding from the city, there should be more oversight because one of the key things in this particular scenario, there's certain things that weren't posted about these services that are provided that, you know, they got to follow the protocol. Everybody has protocols and stuff. So when I was talking to one of these directors, they were like, well, yeah, we get money from the city, but we have our own guidelines and stuff, kind of nonchalant about it. And, well, that doesn't work for me because if they're going to be that nonchalant about it, well, then why are you getting funding from the city? If you want to do your own thing, do your own thing and stuff. I myself, after my father passed, you know, have been doing what I do there since '76 with my dad and have relied on the things we do, which is provide the best customer service for the citizens of Harlingen that at the time went to go visit my father's establishment before I changed it up. So I think, like anything, is to be on top of things, you know, oversight. I know we're all busy. We all do a lot of different things, but I think it's very critical, especially for you guys, because you all were elected by the citizens of Harlingen to make sure the right things are being done and stuff. Of course, we're not going to catch everything. I mean, I certainly don't, and I have a lot of things going on, but eventually things come out and stuff. And as long as we can nip it and make sure we're on the right track, to avoid drama, I hate drama, would be the right thing to do. You know, instead of getting called out, and that's not a good way to go about things and stuff. So I think we're still heading in the right direction. We're making that slow turn, but as long as we're making progress in the right direction, I mean, it's going to take time, but as long as we don't forget what the ultimate goal is to make a better life for everybody in Harlingen, citizens, and for law enforcement, first responders and everything in general, then we should be fine and stuff. Hopefully, that's the case. There's no hidden agendas because, again, as I stated, the truth always comes out, whether we like it or not. There's good and bad and stuff. Unfortunately, my specialty is finding the bad. But that's basically it. My alarm rang, so I have to go. Y'all have a good evening and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else, Amanda?
No one else, ma'am.
Okay. Wonderful. Moving on to item one, approval of minutes, the regular meeting of October 18, 2023. Is there any amendments, changes? If not?
There were a minor change that I gave to Amanda. She's already taken care of that.
Okay. Is there a?
Otherwise, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have item two, the consent agenda. We will be taking up items, well, everything on the consent agenda minus item A and F. Is there a motion to approve?
Wait, 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 wait. Can we pull G aside, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
A, F, and G. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two A, consideration and possible action to approve a request from Sylvia Gamboa, Director of Guidance and Counseling for the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District for a street closure off Fair Park Boulevard between J Street and L Street in front of Casa de Amistad for the Elementary School Expo Thursday, March 28, 2024, at the Casa de Amistad from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Let the record reflect that Rini Betas has abstained from this item. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Is there, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, consideration and possible action to approve the fire services agreement with the Cameron County Emergency Services District Number One in Cities of Comprimera and Palm Valley for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. And let the record reflect that Daniel Lopez has abstained from this vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item G, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of speed humps in the following locations. Gentlemen?
Yep. May I please add Lamar and somewhere around the 1,100 block of Citrus Terrace to this list?
And I'll be adding the second one on Sterling. I'll make the motion to approve with the supplemental streets.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going on to new business, item three, consideration and possible action to cancel the Harlingen City Commission meeting of January 3, 2024. Okay?
Mayor, this item was added at the request of a commissioner. This does fall right after the holiday season, and some of the commissioners may be traveling. So we're asking the commission to consider canceling the January 3 meeting.
Are we going to, like, reschedule it or?
No, we will just have another one later in the month, the second one.
Okay. That was because I'm just wondering, because, like, we canceled October, and we only had one in October, we only had one November. We're having a second one in December, right?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay. It'll be, yes.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item four, consideration and possible action to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Harlingen and Cameron County to provide $1,408,362.15 for the Grimes Road Improvement Project to be funded by TERS Number One. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Daniel Lopez has abstained from this item. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'm curious. I was going through this last night, and what I calculate is the county's share for this project is $3,42,110.84. The city's share is $1.4 million, 8,362. My question is, with some of the other items that are going to be included in today's meeting, shouldn't we use this 1.4 to do matching and try to use this 1.4 in the TERS Number One area instead of using this for this Grimes Road that the county wants done? Because we do have plenty of drainage issues, water and sewer issues, and I feel like this would be more appropriate to use in matching funds or to apply that toward those issues than instead of this road.
Commissioner, we can fund any project that's in the project plan and the finance plan in TERS Number One. We haven't had any come up as of yet. Now, just a reminder to the commission, should the commission decide to fund the 1.4 million, the TERS fund will still have an additional $1 million available to it, actually 1.2 million, to fund other projects.
That workshop we had a couple of days ago, last week, that was extensive. That was 24, 25 mil plus another 25 mil. It could be applied to that. I believe there's over 60-some-odd thousand or whatever. I didn't calculate the total numbers for the street projects that we have going on for drainage. Okay? I believe we need to use as much money as possible toward drainage and water issues.
We would have to, we can, but we have to use the fund within a TERS boundary.
Well, I believe there's going to be issues in this boundaries that would require more than 1.4 million. Okay? I'm not asking for this 1.4 to go elsewhere. Just keep it in that area and apply it to drainage and water issues. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay. This project itself will have some drainage component built into it. The county's going to build in drainage within the road itself to actually drain that area and provide better drainage.
I understand, but that's not one of these top priority drainage issues we have. Secondly, on this particular road, the road that needs the most work on is the county work, county side, not the city side. And we already had, a while back, we had citizens from that area that opposed this. So that's, I mean, to me, it's only logical.
I think, Commissioner, that's probably why the county's putting in over $3 million into the project. A lot of it's going to be forced account. All we're providing is a 1.4 million in a joint project with Cameron County. So, I mean, we're actually stretching our dollar, so. And I think that at the last meeting we had regarding this particular project, the airport spoke in favor and in support of the project because it would help the.
I believe the EDC.
Yes, the EDC did as well.
How soon is that, is building this road, how fast are they going to use it to where it's going to apply extra business toward the income in the EDC? How soon can they get more commercial traffic into this? A month, six months, a year?
Oh, I don't think anybody said, because it's probably hard to put a date on it. I think just having the availability of the road itself would lend itself to provide more traffic into the back part of the airport, so, which is what they were wanting for cargo.
Why didn't we ever look into Riondo, the Riondo Road, instead of Grimes?
Because this actually connects 509 and 499, and it provides direct connectivity to the port of Harlingen.
You know, I know y'all are in the middle of this, but I think that I was going to.
We can do that afterward.
Okay. I'm sorry.
As I recall, expanding the road and putting in the proper drainage on the road or leveraging county money, this will provide a wider road that can handle heavier traffic to the port, to the airport, and that can take it all the way up 49, up the loop to the interstate and to the barges and everything in between. It's a wise use of money. The meeting we had last week was about sewage. We need $108 million just to start the sewage program in the east so that we could properly drain the west. This doesn't address sewage. It addresses the road and the drainage that comes with the road. And it's important to drain the area because this touches EDC property that can attract commercial industrial work. It can help drain the airport, which is just a wonderful thing, and it can help drain out towards the port of Harlingen. This is a win-win. You got to put the infrastructure in to attract industry and commerce.
I understand that, Mike. I really do. But this Grimes Road tees at a dead end. It doesn't go all the way to the port. You still have to go either north or south to get to the port of Harlingen.
It's not a direct connector. There are a few bends in the road.
I do know that we've had a couple of meetings on this, and this is an eligible project, and it is what the TERS is designed to do. We are partnering with the county. I know that this is in line with our plan with the EDC and the growth that we want to see out in the industrial park. And so because of that, I think we've had multiple meetings on this. I do think it is a project that we should support and we should move forward with. I understand your reservations. I share them with the concerns. I think that even if we were to add a million dollars to the needs that we have when it comes to sewage, it's not going to put a dent in what we need. That's a bigger, more comprehensive project, and we're going to tackle that, too, because we're going to be responsible about that and make sure that we can leverage funds from the Texas Water Development Board and so on and so forth to ensure that we're responsible in those endeavors also. But nonetheless, this is a project that we should support as a commission. It is, in order for us to grow, we have to put the infrastructure in place, and I would highly encourage this commission to support the project and to move forward with that. Having said that, is there any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Now, we are going to move, skip over a little bit, and.
Mayor, I think one of the things that I'd like to, just for the public's sake, is ask the commission to consider going to executive session. Both Robert and myself have to leave to go to San Antonio for investment training that's required, and so if we could do the executive sessions now, we could leave right after that, and so.
Absolutely, and we want to make sure that you're on the road and driving safely. Item 17, executive close session regarding the following items. A, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 1 and 2 Attorney Consultation, Section 551.072, regarding Bass Pro land issue. B, consultation with city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. 2, regarding the Humane Society Animal Shelter. And C, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Attorney Consultation, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real estate in Section 551.087, economic development relating to Project EDC and Project Sped Hilding. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The time is now 5:49 PM, and we are going to be in executive session and hopefully out soon. Thank you so much. The time is now 7:04 PM, and we are out of executive session. We have item 15, consideration and possible action regarding item number 17A as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion?
I think you mean item 18, right?
18, yes.
18, but it says here, as it's talking about item 17.
17A.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to acknowledge report and proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 19, general session, consideration and possible action regarding item 17B as discussed in executive session.
I make a motion to acknowledge report and proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20, consideration and possible action regarding item 17C as discussed in executive session.
I make a motion to acknowledge report and proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and now we are going to go back to, thank you. Item five, consideration and possible action to approve a contract with the most qualified and responsible bidder for the purchase and turnkey installation of petroleum storage tanks, dispensers, and complete system upgrade to replace two above-ground fuel storage tanks located at 404 South 54th Street and two underground storage tanks located at 1006 South Commerce Street and related canopies at both locations to comply with the most current TCEQ regulations and fire codes and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Item six, consideration and possible action to approve a service contract between the City of Harlingen and UniFirst Corporation to provide uniform rental and laundering services for city employees excluding police and fire employees and authorize the city manager to sign the contract. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Robert. Item seven, consideration and possible action to prioritize drainage improvement projects for the purposes of identifying grants and to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit multiple grant applications to the Texas Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant and the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program. Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Anna. Item eight, public hearing and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from not designated district to residential single-family district for property bearing a legal description of 3.99 acres out of Block 139 Adams Garden Subdivision C located along the south side of Hughes Road approximately 400 feet east of Bass Boulevard. Javier.
Mayor, City Commission, good evening. This is for a proposed subdivision for single-family homes, south side of Hughes Road, just east of Bass Boulevard. The subdivision itself has already been approved by PNC. We just need the zoning for single-family residential, and that's the area of the property. So it's lots facing Hughes Road, and that's the layout of the proposed subdivision. They're kind of bigger lots, in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Photo from the Hughes Road. No opposition, and so PNC recommended approval unanimously.
Is there any discussion? Okay, at this time, we will open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing and ask.
I'll make a motion.
Ask the city attorney to read the caption, and then we'll do that.
In ordinance submitting the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, request the rezon from not designated D district to residential single-family R1 district for a property bearing a legal description of 3.99 acres out of Block 139 Adams Garden Subdivision C, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
We have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, public hearing and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential multifamily district to planned development district for a 36-lot multifamily development with five-foot side yard setbacks, one access point instead of the required two, and one cul-de-sac instead of the required two for a property bearing a legal description of Lot 2 USVP subdivision located alongside the east side of New Hampshire Street approximately 1,200 feet south of Expressway 83. Javier?
Yes, this is the property just south of the border patrol station along the expressway, and they're proposing a multi-lot for apartments. So this is the layout of the proposed subdivision, one entrance on New Hampshire, the light blue is the proposed onsite detention, and then a dead-end street over here with a smaller cul-de-sac over here. So each lot is going to have either a fourplex or a sixplex apartment unit. When this property over here develops, that's when we're going to get that second entrance. So most, this property is part of the Elef Covara subdivision, but because it only has access to Lamb Avenue, most likely this property will develop as multifamily, and that's when we're going to require that connection to the street, and that's when the second entrance will be provided for the subdivision. And there's more details on the subdivision. They're proposing five-foot side setbacks. Photos of the property. That's the Elef Covara subdivision. That's the vacant property I was telling you about. When this develops, we're going to require that connection, so both will get a second entrance from that development. We have dealt with this situation before, the Park Meadows subdivision on Becker Road. Back in 2012, they began to only have one entrance, but they have a stubout over here. Now we have the Brazil State subdivision is under construction right now, and it's going to connect to that stubout. So when this project is done, they're going to, this is going to get a second entrance. So Fire Department is approving with the understanding that there will be a second entrance when the other property develops. Plankton City Commission held a public hearing, no opposition, and they approved it unanimously.
Javier, I do have a question, one question. The neighborhood that is right there next to Covada, the neighborhood never had a name. It wasn't a subdivision. It was, thank you. Did they recently change it to the Covada or subdivision or change the name of that area?
No, I mean, this property here or?
The one that is adjacent to, like, their fence lines up with Covada, and there's a.
Right here.
Yep.
Yes, when the Covara subdivision developed, it was discovered that some of the houses were encroaching on the dealership.
But did they change that to now a different, and is that something that the city does or is that?
So when they subdivided the Covara subdivision, they gave that property to the people that encroached. So it was done through that subdivision process.
Okay. And they changed the name of the area?
No, this neighborhood stayed the same.
Okay.
And then this is the Elef Covara subdivision, which is this one. So you have the dealership here, and then you have a second lot that belongs to the same company, but it only has access to Lamb Avenue over here. So because it doesn't have access to the front of the road, most likely this will be a multifamily development. And so when that comes in, we're going to require that connection, and they'll get the second entrance that the Fire Department needs.
What happens if that doesn't become a multifamily?
If it's a single family, we will require that entrance, too, because it's a dead-end street, and we have language in the ordinance that can make developers connect.
So whenever that's developed, regardless of whether it's single-family, multifamily, you can force them to put in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thanks. Is there any other discussion? No? Okay. At this time, we will open up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance?
Hello, David Chacon. I'm the engineer at Record. So just quick words. This is going to be our first development in Cameron County. We're excited to work with all of this group of developers that usually work in the city of McAllen or in Al County, and we recognize a need for. And we recognize the need for housing in this area, especially this type of housing. So hopefully we'll get approval, and we look forward to keep working with you.
Thank you. Welcome to Harlingen. Welcome to Cameron County. Welcome to the best city in Cameron County. Okay. If there's no one else to speak for or against, we will close the public hearing at this time and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
In ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential multifamily M2 District to planned development PD District for a 36-lot multifamily development with five-foot side yard setbacks, one access point instead of the required two, and one cul-de-sac instead of the required two for a property bearing a legal description of Lot 2 USVP subdivision located on the east side of New Hampshire Street, approximately 1,200 feet south of Expressway 83, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to sign a gift deed for the conveyance from the Harlingen Irrigation District to the City of Harlingen of the Lipscomb Ditch being a 15.094 acres of land out of Blocks 28, 29, 30, 31, 50, 51, and 52 of the Lonzie Hills subdivision located on the west side of Louisiana Street, approximately 598 feet north of Morris Road. Javier?
So we have this proposed, a single-family subdivision, which is this one, Allison subdivision. This is on Morris here, and this is Louisiana. So it's kind of nearby where we, we just were. For drainage, they would like to expand this ditch here to comply with the drainage requirement instead of, instead of having onsite detention. But this ditch belongs to the irrigation district. It does not belong to the city. But the irrigation district has, because of the development in the area, the irrigation district doesn't, does not need this ditch anymore for farming purposes. So they're willing to gift deed, give the, the land to the city. That will, and so if the city accepts taking over this ditch, that will, that will help this project. So they're gonna widen the ditch, and also they're gonna make improvements to the crossing here. But it, it also will help other properties. There's other vacant properties in the area that will benefit from this.
Are they gonna do the whole ditch, or just that portion that's nearby them? Your minutes are up, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Luis Vargas, City Engineer, for the record. Only the portion northwest of that yellow line, it, it, there will be a detention pond there, just inline detention.
That's just an open field where they have cattle, or they used to have cattle there, that right to the left of Louisiana. Right, that's Louisiana, isn't it?
Correct, yes. And so that part of the ditch northwest of that yellow line or the perimeter of the subdivision will become the detention pond.
Can you give them the pointer, please?
Yeah. Oh, I got it right. So this, from here to here, the detention pond, that's the inline detention pond. And then there'll be a pipe coming out of here, and then drainage improvements or ditch improvements all the way here. And then, if I'm not mistaken, there'll be a, also, I guess, included with the development, a box culvert eight by six here on the crossing. That's actually part of the drainage master plan. So I guess right now, the deal is that all of those improvements are done instead of doing an onsite detention. And actually, Mr. Andy Vixel is here with Vixel Engineer. He was a previous seat engineer. He's the subdivision engineer now.
Okay, so the city is willing to take over this property and widen it, deepen it, and do what we need to do to provide better drainage?
Correct, yes.
That's the punchline.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to accept.
And that's your recommendation, yes?
Yes, yes. I think it's a good idea to do those improvements that's just, those described improvements, yes.
Wonderful.
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for a special use permit request to allow a bar lounge in a light industry district located at 1510 North Commerce Street bearing a legal description of Lot 3, Block 1, replat of Lot 1, Block 1, Casablanca subdivision. Sorry?
You missed 11. Did you skip 11?
I did, oh.
Yeah, but that's fine.
Okay, we'll just take up 12 right now. And so if we can do that, 12 first, Javier?
Yes. So this, this is a bar that was approved on first reading in your last meeting. But there were, there were some questions about, are they gonna make improvements to the facade? So the applicant is here, the property owner is here to answer those types of questions. And I have some better pictures. So that's the view looking south. That's the view looking north.
Are the property owners here?
The, the property owner's here, and the applicant is here.
Are they willing to pop up there?
My name is Tomas Diaz. I am the property owner.
Oh, perfect. And ma'am?
I am Veronica Rosas. I'm the applicant.
Oh, perfect. The, the reason I ask these questions is, I don't know if you're aware, but we're looking at doing a pretty massive improvement on Commerce. We got a five-and-a-half million dollar grant for it. And I was gonna see if you guys are willing to upgrade or fix, fix up the facade so it looks nicer, at least within the next year or two, so that when we do this nicer Boulevard, it'll be more inclusive and nicer for passerby.
Not, not this year. This is not in the budget for this year. We actually, we actually spent quite a bit of money on it this year. We replaced all the roof. We actually replaced quite a bit of the framing on the roof this year. And we made other upgrades inside. Not this year. It's not on the budget for this year.
Is that something you'd be willing to consider in the next two or three years?
Yes, for sure. And, and I've been thinking about it. Unfortunately, when I purchase this property, the shape of the roof does not lend itself to a lot of things. And so I've been considering various options. And once I find something that it's workable with what is already built, for sure, we will upgrade it.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate both of you being here.
Thank you.
Is this part of our, yes. If we can, I'm gonna, I'd like to share some information with you, so I'm gonna ask Beverly to, to, if, I don't know if you'd like to just, on the, on the mic, talk a little bit about it, just, just so that you have an understanding, and maybe this could be helpful. But if you could direct it to the commission, Beverly.
Sure, sorry. I'm directing it to you, but I want to face the commission too. So the Harlingen EDC recently implemented round two of the Revitalize Harlingen, which does include Commerce as one of the zones or part of the zones. So there are funds available for infrastructure improvements for this property and others along Commerce Street. So I would highly recommend that this business and other businesses along Commerce look at that program. They can go to harlingenedc.com/revitalizeharlingen and get all the details. Or they can give us a call at the office, 956-216-5081, and we can give them all the details.
And this is a matching grant up to $10,000?
Up to $10,000, yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there any other discussion?
No. Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to sign an access and utility easement document to capture a sidewalk and water meter on the subject property bearing a legal description of 0.26 acres out of Block 1 Williamson subdivision located on the west side of F Street, approximately 370 feet north of Expressway 83.
Yes, Mayor, this is the brand-new Stripe Store on F and Expressway 83. And when the, after the project was completed, the developer got a survey done, and from the survey, it was determined that a portion of the sidewalk along F and some of the utilities are in private property. So that's the reason for this, is to put those on a utility easement. And that way, the developer can close, can close the project.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, consideration and possible action to approve the renewal of the lease document, N62467-87 RP 00006415 acres of land located at 1300 Teague Street. Harlingen, Texas currently used by the Navy Operational Support Center for a term beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, consideration and possible action to approve a project for $23,441 fiscal year budget 2023, 2024 to improve a sidewalk on Dixie Land Road across Harlingen South. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great job, Chris. Item 15, consideration and possible action to approve the Harlingen EDC updated fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual work plan. Is there a motion?